Point town plan and zoning commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand to the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members of the presence this evening. Commission members should have received the draft minutes of June 25, 2019. Any corrections, additions to those minutes? I would like to add one for the Carroll County Public Schools. I'd like to add Dr. Kristy Farver as principal. That was admitted and she was here for that session. Sir, hearing anything else?
A move that we accept.
A second. Other discussion? All those in favor, sing a five of standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Carrie, thank you. Action items night. Tannery Barn preliminary site plan, 61 Frederick Street, approval. Likewise. Jim, would you like to start us out with that?
Sure. We left off last month. There were a couple open-ended comments. Some approval letters had not been received. Those have all come through in the course of the last month and so all we really need to do at this point, assuming approval this evening, is circulate my hours for signature and they'll be ready to go. So the staff recommendation is for approval tonight.
Okay, well first approval will be preliminary. My question is, how come there's so much construction without any approvals?
The barn is currently considered a single-family dwelling and under a residential building permit, the deck is being demolished and reconstructed under a residential permit, though it's being constructed to commercial standards. So they were able to apply as a house to start doing some of the work that if, and just to play the what-if game, if it never became an event venue or a meeting venue, it could still be a house with a bigger deck on the back. So they've been able to apply under residential permits to do some work at the property already that doesn't necessarily force its use for commercial use.
Appears to me to getting some gray areas here on that. Am I correct in assuming that?
You, yes, certainly. It's a very unusual case, as you've, I'm sure, realized. It's a, for the small amount of site work that's being done, there have been a lot of questions to try to puzzle out on this one, you know, between the shuttle service and, you know, the off-site parking and it's just been a very somewhat unique project.
All replies have been back from all the agents, State Highway and-
Correct, yes.
And a letter from Evapco for, as far as parking and shuttling.
Yes, we have a copy of the agreement with Evapco for the shuttle. Evapco has, basically has offered up their parking lot at the new building and they have a shuttle that they can, that the Tannery Barn will be able to utilize. Of course, there are some qualifiers, you know, as far as scheduling and things like that, but they have, they do have a written agreement in place.
Any comments from any members?
I have one.
Jim, pause.
I would like to make one comment. I said from the very beginning that I didn't fully understand how this could possibly be permitted in downtown and to this day, I still don't. I think it's being shoehorned in. The use on that property does not, in my opinion, agree with a downtown business. So on that note, I'm going to vote against personally and I suggest the rest of the commission consider that, considering they have to use off-site property for parking, make all these special exceptions. It's not compatible with downtown, in my opinion. I don't see how it's even covered by our zoning code.
With that stated, let's start out, I'll entertain a motion to start with for preliminary approval and then we'll move from there.
I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for 61 Frederick Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Other discussions? Any comments from the floor? Who's speaking? Please come to-
Steve Harley. So I live at 65 Frederick, so I'm a neighbor next door and honestly, I don't consider where I live as the downtown because it's not really in the downtown. That whole area's been turned into a commercial area. There's no residential left. I think I'm the last residential house in that end of town, past the church. Church owns, there's a rental right there, but there's no residential. It's all, it's all commercial. And, you know, initially, you know, my response when it was purchased was, you know, do I really want this? But in talking to Victoria and Janet and all, I would be in favor. I know that may sound crazy, having a wedding venue next to your house, but I think they'll do a good job. They've lived up, they've come over and talked to me and they've been very upfront and honest and, you know, my opinion is I would vote for it, okay? Because I've been in Tawny Town since 1987 and I think it's good to be pro-business. I mean, business, we need, we need a restaurant in this town. We need, you know, we, you know what I'm talking about? Where do you go to eat around here, guys? We don't leave town for a week, right? So I mean, we need, we need business in this town. And if we're not gonna, the right kind of businesses, right? I mean, we need the right kind of business. I think that's going to bring quality, quality business to the town. I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna hurt the town. I think it's gonna bring quality business or bring people who've never been in this town to come into the town in a venue, right? And we've all been to different venues and we say, boy, that was just a pretty town and that was a pretty area. Maybe bring new people to the, to the area because Carroll County's a pretty county. There's a lot of pretty farmland around here. It's a lot of reasons to come to the county. So I think it will bring good business to the town, not detrimental business. And if I thought it was detrimental, I'd tell you, but I think it's, I think it's good business, you know? So that's why I got to say, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else?
Chris Tillman, Georgia's on your bed and breakfast. As you all know, we just opened a few weeks ago. You know, we've, we've been through our share of trials and tribulations and we've, we've been through the process with, with all of you folks here. And, you know, one of the things that brought us to Tawny Town was we saw a town that was poised to make an upswing. And in the year that we've been here, we see that happening. We see, you know, new stores moving in. We see Floral Fets having moved in next to the Stone House. We see the coffee shop on the corner. We see the nice and properly funded and properly backed gun shop move in there at the Modestine Bakery. So you're building momentum in this town for, you know, for generating more business and for not only increasing revenue base, but just increasing traffic to the town with money, if you know what I mean. It certainly would be a plus to my business to have an event space down there. It wasn't part of our business plan in locating here because, you know, that wasn't even a thought when we first started coming into Tawny Town. But I think that, you know, Mr. Wance's comments notwithstanding, I think it's a very appropriate use in a, in a town like this. You're not in the middle of downtown. I don't think that you're looking at foot traffic or vehicle traffic that will negatively influence what happens at the, at the square in terms of traffic. I don't know that that can get any worse than what it is sometimes with the truck traffic, but until they build a bypass, there's nothing we can do about that. But I think that it is exactly the kind of business we should be looking at. You know, just a few moments ago, I watched as the zoning appeals board declined the request from the liquor store. Not that I am in favor of liquor stores per se, I was ambivalent about what kind of business goes in there. I'm not opposed to them, but I am opposed to vacant storefronts. And I, and I think that anytime that you leave that kind of opening, it becomes an open sore and we have a few of those in town. They're steadily decreasing and I think we should be working to keep those decreasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. I'm Janet Paulson and as I work with Victoria, I'm the project manager and the general manager of hopefully the new Tannery Barn and also Floral Fets, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about our passion for a moment because you're, you know, I want you to understand how we have a love of Tawny Town, okay? Victoria and I both grew up in small towns. I grew up in Johnstown, Pennsylvania, which is a very small town, and I see what happens to Main Streets and it's really sad. And matter of fact, I went to high school in Gettysburg, so I know this area and I have a passion. So when she approached me to work with her, I got very passionate. And as a matter of fact, I don't know if you all have seen the Carroll County newspaper recently, but I decided on my own, I said to Victoria, do you mind if I enter the Carroll County Business Challenge? Okay? I don't know if you all know about that, but nobody ever from any business here in
support and Janet for speaking her heart.
Tawny Town has entered. And I entered as a new business for Floral Fets and there were 24 applications and I'm
And I just wanted to tell you that this is the truth and my question is, why?
one of the finalists. And I went to that thing and I'm so pro-Tawny Town that I actually got another business
Like what is your concern? Because yes, it's a new project. Yes, Tawny Town hasn't done it before.
who I think is going to be opening over, Jim, if I'm not mistaken, it's a distillery.
Yes, maybe Carroll County didn't do it before, but if we want to change something for the
I brought a business to Tawny Town.
better, we need to change something.
I'm out there promoting you.
And the change starts with doing something that hasn't been done before.
So when I hear the negativity of us not like, well, you don't have, you know, this shouldn't
And to me, if you're doing it right and with a good intention, what's the problem?
even be shoehorned in or any of this kind of stuff, yeah, granted, we have some problems
If you have any issues, please let us know because I think anybody can testify here
there and I wish we would have had a real simple case there, but we didn't. And now we have to move forward and we have a passion.
that so far, we've done everything right and we continue to do it right and we're committed
We started this floral shop who's gonna, who has brought business there.
to do it right because we see a bigger picture and we see Tawny Town in this picture and
We're also going to be doing this Tannery Barn. It's gonna all work together and bring exposure and nice things to Tawny Town.
we see many businesses thriving. To me, it's not just about us, me, Floral Fets, Tannery Barn.
So I'm a little bit confused on those comments and I just wanted to say, we're here, we
We want the Tawny Town to change for the better.
have our roots here and we want to see Main Street prosper.
And if you have any problems, just simply no, it doesn't work for us.
So I hope, I hope that helps a little bit in your decisions because we're not here
I would love to know what your concerns are and I would love to see how we can talk
to do anything evil or any of that. We're here to make a beautiful downtown for you all.
it out and address it.
And I can't be more pro-Tawny Town than, I'm like your biggest cheerleader right now
Because I think we talked about the noise, we talked about parking, we talked about everything and we go deep.
and I've talked about it in the press and in the newspapers, so please, I hope, I hope
We're gonna go, between my and Janet's experience in the event industry, this is not just a
it would be unanimous. I hope you would all love us, okay? Because we all love you.
decision of a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into making this the right kind of venue
Is there anyone else?
and we have great plans that will bring business to Tawny Town. And by you saying no, you're actually saying no to development of Tawny Town. So, and we're open to conversation.
We thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Comments from the-
I've got one comment and I'm, I'm very much for it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, so let's, let's cover this preliminary.
May I, may I respond? I mean, she, it sounds like she was kind of inviting me to respond to her and I feel like I should do that. May I do that, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I have nothing against what you're doing. I've seen it done other places. My concern is the location and whether it agrees or disagrees with the zoning there. That's my concern. I have looked over countless times the zoning code and I can't figure out how this is anything other than just trying to shoehorn a use into a property. And that's my only concern, is that when this creates problems, they're going to come back to us and say, how was it even allowed to go there? And that's my, that's my issue with it.
What problems do you anticipate?
There's a lot of problems that could happen. I can't anticipate every problem that could possibly occur, but people could come up with noise. People could talk about, you know, there is foot traffic on 194 because no matter what you do, people are going to decide they're just gonna walk to Evapco. Things like that. There are potential issues that could come up and in my opinion, that could come back to the city because I don't see how it fits.
Don't you think that-
Please, please come to the mic if you're going to respond back.
I'm sorry. Those are valid comments. But don't you think that this can come up in any project? It doesn't matter if it's in downtown district or not downtown district?
Not necessarily any project, but there are projects that are a no-brainer. They definitely fit. Look through their list. Hair and beauty establishment, it's a no-brainer. It's allowed, it's there. This one, I don't even see how it's allowed in it. You're having a tent that you're holding the parties in, whereas part of the whole downtown is primarily within the structure. That's not happening. It's customary accessory uses and buildings. It's not a tent. What I'm seeing is it's not a typical use for the property that's going to cause problems because it's not being contained within a building that downtown is supposed to be. And that's what I keep coming back to. Now, don't get me wrong. I would love to see businesses in downtown. I would. I ran on that in my campaign. What I don't want to see is forcing things into downtown and making, I don't even have a word to give it, making a hodgepodge of things that were just crammed in for the sake of having business. And downtown is a shared area, whether we like it or not. It is residences, it is commercial, again, whether we like it or not. But there are certain considerations after, that have to be made when you're looking at these projects. My concern solely is based on the fact that I don't believe it actually fits the zoning code.
Well, how about the interim? Isn't it in downtown district?
That was grandfathered in. Zoning code didn't exist when it came in.
Okay, so how about changes for zoning code if this is something that can actually be good for the town?
And that's a possibility, but it's not going to happen quickly for that to happen.
Well, but, you know, the way you talk actually makes me want to just totally walk away.
Well, and I don't want that to be the case. I just want-
Well, but that's what you're making me do.
I understand.
Because if I cannot do what I set my foot to do, taking into consideration, location, town, geographical, you know, interim, et cetera, I mean, what else can I do? Because if you're saying that this could be a problem and you're saying that every single thing that we still need to get approved is going to create this kind of process, I mean, is it worth it?
So let me go back to where I was before, okay? Because we've talked about this quite a number of times here. You've been with us, you've given us everything you had and you've given me every assurance, okay? I have nothing against your business. It's going to pass tonight. I know that. I know how they're voting, okay? My issue is not with your business. My issue's not with you personally, okay? I look at the code and I just try to figure out how it's going to fit. Now, if, if Jim can give me a really clear definition of how it fits in there, I'm on board 100%. But at the same time, I, to a certain degree, I personally am bound to the code and how I, how I take it, okay? I want you to have this business in Tawny Town. I think it's going to be a great business. My only concern is its location. Does that make any sense?
It does make sense.
Right.
And I think we did our homework really, really, really thoroughly. And on top of that, like our neighbor just confirmed-
Right.
I mean, if there were any complaints, that's pretty much the person.
Right.
You know what I mean? So-
And that, and that means a lot. And the fact that you said it really, really goes a long way. So Jim, can you give me a little more insight into that?
Well, I think, I think we covered this a couple or a few meetings ago. The reason that I believe it fits well within the downtown business district and, you know, whether, whether you agree with what's in the code or not, 205-19B-12, theaters and private assembly halls. So what is a private assembly? It's gathering by invitation, not open to the general public. That's what this is. This is a private assembly hall. It has the same impact as a theater would. You're going to have a group of people assembling, going into an event and dispersing at roughly the same time, just like you would if we had a movie theater downtown. Now, whether, whether you believe that a theater or this type of use is appropriate downtown, that, that I can't address, but that is what's in the code and that's what I have ruled.
Right.
That's how I, that's how-
Right, and I get that. My-
The code is saying it fits.
Right. Where I have the hesitation is under permitted uses where it says located primarily within a building. That's where I have the hesitation and the issue. And can you speak to that part of it?
And that, that certainly is the, the end goal of the project, I believe, is to utilize the barn. That's, that's what, what I think drew the developer to the property is the barn. The use, the use of the tent is to help get to basically be up and running until the barn can be modified as necessary to hold events inside the barn. So that's the end, the ultimate end goal is to have the events in the building and be able to spill out into the courtyard because it's a nice area. It's, you know, it would lend itself well, something like that.
Okay.
But you do make a good point.
Right. And why, I think that's where some of the confusion is because all the discussion we had, I never had it in my mind that this was a, eventually we're going to use the barn. All the talk has been, it's going to be in a tent, we're having events in a tent, 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 tent. I don't recall any discussion of eventually we're going to build out and go into the barn. So I think that's part of the conversation I'd been missing.
And to be honest with you, this process has been so long-
Right.
-so costly. We're absolutely depleted. If we cannot find a way to start doing business that renting the property as much as we can ASAP, we cannot finish our vision.
Okay.
Because yes, our vision is to build out because I personally want to have a four seasons venue.
Okay.
And that means a building. Can I afford to build it right away? Absolutely can't, especially knowing how costly this part was. So we're trying to kind of divide it, chop it up into stages and this is the first stage. If we can start renting the outside, we're hoping to make it, you know, as permanent as possible, but yes, eventually we want to put an extension so it's going to be enclosed, it's going to help in so many ways, from noise to, again, the climate control. So yes, if that's-
Perfect. Right.
I'm the first one to say, I could do it tomorrow if I could.
Right.
So absolutely.
Perfect. I think that's a piece of information that was missing for me up until here because I'd never heard talk of actually using the barn. It was always tent.
The barn, we can use up to 99 people and we would love to get a permission as soon as possible, you know? So absolutely, but you know, if we want to do a little more than 99 people, we can't do that, so that's the outside patio, but we definitely have plans to enclose it. And I'm not just saying that. We have plans to enclose it.
Okay, well, that answers everything that I had. I think that's, that's sufficient.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to call for the question and we're going to have a vote on the, on, we're going to have the vote on the preliminary motion for approval. All those in favor of the motion for approval on the preliminary, sing a five of saying aye.
Aye.
There's opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Now, is there any reason, Jay or Jim, that we can't move into a final site plan approval at this point?
I think we're right along. There's no further review that's going to be done.
All right. Let me start off by asking for a motion for final approval.
I move that we allow final approval.
I'll second it.
Other discussion? Any comments from the floor?
No.
Did we change your mind?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion for final approval for Tannery Barn, sing a five of saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. We'll just need a break after that. Next item, next item on the agenda is Mees Crossing, presentation of townhouses and single family. Jim, would you start us off and then we'll move in?
Well, we're gonna see, this is the first time for me as well, gonna see the renderings for, well, I'll back up a little bit. Mees Crossing has a different builder lined up for the townhomes than was planned a year or so ago. We had approved townhouse elevations some time ago for the Ryan Homes product, but at this point, Bob Ward New Homes will be building the premium lots and the single, and the townhomes on the project, so we need to-
Is that this folder here, Jim, that we're dealing with?
That's, that's the older.
That's the old, that's the-
That's the old one, right. These, these are completely new for us, you don't-
These ones are just done way.
So the only, the only thing from, the only thing from your earlier packet that is still applicable is the standard lot, single families. Those elevations stay the same. Those are still going to be the Ryan Homes product. So the premium singles and the towns will be something that we're seeing for the first time this evening and it will be the board's, the commission's job to review them and, you know, consider them in terms of complying with the community village standards.
So I'd start with, on behalf of Mees Crossing, we're very excited to have a wedding that you're, that you're, that only, only others. Just very quickly, here's Mees Crossing, townhouses are here and then the yellow lots are the premium lots. So I bring that up just so as a reminder of what architecture we're talking about, where, and I have a whole lot more to say tonight, luckily. I'm going to turn it over to Earl Robinson, who is Bob Ward's right and left-hand man that keeps this organization going. Of course.
I can't believe he would do that.
I thought he was going to skip over you.
I tried, I can't believe, I tried. I wanted to have addressed what Jim and I were on. We have approved architecture for the whole site, okay? As we all know, lots of discussion on it. Regardless, Ryan Homes only went forward on the, what we are referring to as the standard single-family lots, but we don't have to look at those, okay? If Bob Ward would have just done the exact same elevations as Ryan Homes put forward on the townhouses, you know, on the premium lots, we wouldn't have been, we wouldn't be that, okay? But they're going to do their elevation, so we're here to show you exactly what, what they're doing, which we are feeling, but we'll have you turn this around.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are very excited about this opportunity and I'm going to give two seconds of background and tell you how we got to this point. As you guys are probably aware, we built the Creekside next to the Food Lion, a very successful project for us and then we had the opportunity to move over to Meadowport. Again, it's been very, very successful and we've learned a lot. We've been out building for about six and a half years in this marketplace, pretty much the only larger builder who's doing any, any volume up here, but we picked up a lot of things. What we have discovered is that there is an opportunity for some upscale single-family homes and when we were- He keeps this organization going. Of course.
I can't believe he would do that.
I thought he was going to skip over you.
I tried, I can't believe it. I wanted to have addressed what Jim and I were... We have approved architecture for the whole site, okay? As we all know, there's lots of discussion on it. Regardless, Ryan Homes only went forward on the, what we are referring to as the standard single-family lots. So we don't have to look at those, okay? If Bob Ward would have just done the exact same elevations as Ryan Homes put forward on the townhouses, you know, in the premium lots, we wouldn't be that, okay? But they're going to do their elevation, so we're here to show you exactly what they're doing, which we are feeling, but we'll let you determine that yourself.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are very excited about this opportunity, and I'm going to give two seconds of background and tell you how we got to this point. As you guys are probably aware, we built a creekside next to the food line, a very successful project for us, and then we had the opportunity to move over to Meadowbrook. Again, it's been very, very successful, and we've learned a lot. We've been now building for about six and a half years in this marketplace, pretty much the only larger builder who's doing any volume up here. But we picked up a lot of things. What we have discovered is that there is an opportunity for some upscale single-family homes, and when we were speaking about the opportunity to build a more luxury, we got very excited because we know how deep the market is for what we call the standard style, which is what Meadowbrook is. So we decided to move forward with the...
Look over there.
Oh, I'm sorry. We decided to move forward with the single families in here. We came up with this product, and Ed will show you guys that, and I'll walk you through a little bit about what we're doing here. And these designs you see are designed specifically for here. So we did a lot of market research on this. We wanted to come up with something that would really be a craftsman-esque style. So you can see the look, the siding with the clipped roofs in here, the larger columns with stone. These elevations are exactly what folks are buying today as an upper scale. We do not offer these elevations at Meadowbrook. So if you wanted to buy this home at Meadowbrook, it's not available. If you want to buy this at Meadowbrook, it's not available. It's not in our... So we're really excited about this. We think that this captures the elements of not only the town, but an upscale element that doesn't really exist today. And this will complement the community. We hope you guys like it as much as we have. We spent a lot of time on this. Well, Stephen and Ed have been saying, hey, guys, we've got to get to the planning board, and we're like, we need a little bit of time to do this right. We even had these colors that were done in here. We hired color coordinators and said, we want to do this right. What's the right color schemes that we should do? We've got a little bit of the two tones in here, and this is really special. We hope you guys, you gentlemen, agree with us. Any questions else?
Would you move back to the site plan?
Yeah, move that back to the site.
And show us exactly? I lost...
Where are they going to be?
Are they in the yellow?
They are in the yellow.
What's over here on these yellow?
Same thing.
Yeah, so...
All the yellow is the premium.
Just to explain, the first section, which is, that you all have approved, is 1 and 1A.
Right.
And that specifically includes these.
Okay.
Tell me about those yellow ones there.
Those are the premium lots.
Well, what kind of a price range are on those premiums?
We expect, well, before I answer that straight, I'll say where we are at Meadowbrook and where we expect to be here. Our average selling price at Meadowbrook right now is $345,000. We expect these prices to be between $20,000 and $35,000 more than that.
I want to... What is your thinking about a person spending that kind of money right beside of 153 townhouses? How are you going to sell that price range house when you have 153 townhouses right beside of it?
Very easily. We do this all the time.
You do? Tell me about it.
I'll tell you. The way this works is you've got a built-in resale in your market right here. So there's many different reasons for it. One, when folks purchase a townhome, that's the millennials of the world right now. That's who's going to purchase these. What we're finding in this marketplace up here, there's really two distinct buyers. There's the millennial buyer, and then there's more of the upper end or, we would say, the retiree. We're not seeing as much of a 30-year-old buyer. We're seeing a 25, and we're seeing a 42, or they're about a year old. This is going to be the younger buyers, and we're going to tell these folks, when you go to resell this home, the folks who are already living in Tawny Town and love this area and this community and are helping support the whole of the clubhouse because we need some density for the beauty we're going to have here, they're already built in. And also, this is very, very common outside of this marketplace. It's not uncommon at all. And where this buyer's going to be coming from, this Frederick, Westminster, and Howard County, that's where they probably live today or where they grew up, the townhomes across the street from them. We don't see them saying, oh my gosh, I couldn't possibly purchase that. We think it's going to be a positive that we've got a little bit more affordable in here. And these are not cheap townhomes. This isn't a barracks style that, it's a flat front elevation. This is an upper scale looking home for county.
Yeah, we'll see that soon.
So you're saying that we're going to see influx of outside people, outside of our own community, buying these homes, not our local people? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it's going to be both. I can't say for sure. I can tell you what we believe it will be, and then that varies. What we're seeing, folks, today is Westminster, Howard County, and Frederick. That's who's buying in Meadowbrook today. More so than this general area, I'm picking off the top of my head, we're probably seeing 75% that live 12 miles or more from Tawny Town as our purchaser. Maybe 10 miles, because we do see, the rents from Westminster are approaching $2,000 a month. Shocking, you'll be able to virtually purchase a home, a townhome, which will be in the mid-twos in here, of course, depending what the interest rates are, but about the same as you would pay in rent. It doesn't even make any sense why you would still rent. So these are going to be nice. This isn't, I think a lot, sometimes when folks think of townhomes, they think of no barrage, barracks, flat fronts. That's not, you guys will see that in just a moment. We're really excited about it.
Yeah, I want to see the townhouses.
So Earl, we also, this is why we're on the single families. We also have a large rancher that's, will bring to you when we try to, it's in design right now.
I would feel much better about this whole project if you could make me believe that people are going to buy those premium homes with 153 townhouses right beside them. I would feel better if you could convince me on that.
I don't think that he would be making a commitment that he didn't believe. I mean, it's...
Well, I know Bob Ward has a good reputation around here. I hope you're right.
Well, we do. We're buying with our feet. We believe in this, and we've designed homes specifically for this, so we think this is going to be a highly successful neighborhood. We would be doing it, that's a good point, if we didn't believe that. Okay? All right, so this is our townhome plan. Again, you guys, gentlemen, you'll notice the color schemes that we're using here. We had this professionally designed, so we've got a craftsman-esque look with the decals that you see in here, garage doors, glass in it, door doors over all of the front doors as well. And even like, if you notice the windows and...
The roof line's a little bit different up top. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sure, please.
We're just comparing what was...
And one thing that you will see there, that you won't see there, but that is, I think critically important, is that the roof pitch on the Bob Ward townhouse is a 612, and we were dealing with the, I believe it was a 512 with the... And that makes a difference. That really helps the stature of the house.
Actually, I like the old roof line better than the new. You know, just looking at the comparison, I like the roof line on the old a lot better than the straight roof, straight across.
I think a lot of...
It's not a straight across, and they're just right there. You need to look at the shadow lines.
Yeah, I figured that was a firewall.
It's moved that... No, they're jobs.
Okay.
It's a two-foot job.
Okay.
And that's the...
And your garage doors are going to look like that, son?
Yes, sir.
So explain to me the two-foot jog. Is each one just set back two feet, or do you have back and front, back and front?
Exactly.
Okay. So similar to what the original had?
No two are alike.
Right. This rendering assumes you're on a perfectly flat grade this way, anytime that you're, and that happens very seldom in here. So as you're moving up and down the street, you get that drop, is what, you get the drop in the jump.
Why did you pick the garage doors with appears to be like metal grates in front of it, like it's being locked behind bars?
They're supposed to look like planks.
They look to me like it's a...
They're planks, like a carriage, like a carriage door.
I like that. You too?
These are more expensive than the standard.
Yeah, I like that.
Much more. Much more expensive.
Yeah.
These are the really good ones. We're not allowing them to break some bars.
Okay.
That's just the graphic of it.
Well, they got the way to go.
Out of curiosity...
Not built yet.
Why don't, why can't they have porches? That's what I would love to see, just something to set them apart from all the other flat-faced townhouses out there. Even just a small, you know, little enclosed area with a raised, I mean, obviously you have, you know, maybe a three-foot by three-foot cement pad there, but even the struggle we had with the old design was it was just so plain.
These are all covered.
I understand they're covered, right.
And I can take you right now to, you know, a site that's only about 11 miles away that has these amazing texture, okay? When you see the roof, you know, this is a one-dimensional plan that you're looking at here.
I understand.
It actually come off the front of the house by three and a half feet.
Right.
To answer your question, we really don't see that very often, and a big part of the reason is cost, to be honest. And because when we start adding components like that, like we're going to add a porch or whatever the case may be, it seems like it would be affordable, and it's not, when we're pouring so much concrete. It's also, folks don't find it usable. So now, if these were non-barage and it would go all the way across, maybe, but with a garage in front, there's so much limited space, no one's going to sit on it. It really wouldn't be much room there anyway. So that's a real reason. So we put the money in this in the detail, and in the garage doors, the windows, it's as simple as this is. Most styles today are 6 colonial style, this is a craftsman style.
Brad, I'll also tell you from building these myself, okay? What I want to make sure is that when we come back and look at these covered porches, that they look good, all right? So this actually was backed into the house, and that's just all...
Well, it's candy levered in there, right?
Yeah, but it's being held that way versus the post. You go in the posts, okay? They usually deteriorate, they rot, and they need to be upkeep. These will look really good. I can show you some of these right now that are probably the neighborhood of four or five years old, and you would think they would just put up last week. They're that, they look that strong.
What's your price range of these?
Low to mid-twos. We expect the sales price to be mid-twos.
Mid-twos?
Mid-twos, yes, sir.
Please, if you have a comment, come to the mic.
Okay, so your townhomes are...
Say your name and...
Priscilla Plummer. So these townhouses are going to start at low twos?
Mid-twos.
Mid-twos. What are they comping to? There's not a townhouse in Tawny Town that is comping at that. Where are you going to get your comps from to resell those homes?
The person who's going to be purchasing this is coming from Westminster. There isn't anything in the marketplace like that. You're exactly right, because everything here is much older. When we came and started building the single-family homes here at Meadowbrook, we couldn't find resell single-family homes, for the most part, that were over about 230 or 240, 10 years older. I'm telling you what we did with comps.
I was going to say, because I live in one that was comped.
There's not very many. The majority of the homes right here were in the 230, 240 range, and we were $100,000 more. Now, there was a few, sure, I'm not suggesting there weren't any, but the huge majority of homes were in the lower to mid-twos for a single-family home, and we raised that number over $100,000.
But where, again, though, how do you expect the market to go up on a townhome when you're bringing something that's so high-end to a low-end townhouse market? How are you going to turn that, I mean, because really your comps are going to be your grand drive, your carnival drive?
Yeah, an appraiser's going to look at the fact that it's not in this market.
Right, but there is...
This is 1920 square feet, and it's a garage.
Right, I understand that, but living in Tawny Town, who started at a townhome and then went to a single-family home, so I've done this little, you know, evolving circle thing that you guys have been, you know, talking about and doing all that stuff, I did that. And my townhome was so hard to comp against because that's what I was doing against Grant, and I wasn't living on Grant or Carnival Drive. I lived in the only other newer section of town that had new townhomes that were updated, you know, and three stories and all that stuff. And I had, we had one heck of a time getting anything to comp to it.
Well, there's another thing I'll add to this, is that we're going to open another town community, which we have the only two in Carroll County, and I'm aware of that new construction, in New Windsor, all completely approved, ready to go. It's called Snyder's Summit. We're going to be starting in there for a similar-looking style home for $269,000. Is anyone interested in where you get those comps from? Well, before we put the millions of dollars in investments, we hire folks, not just myself, but to go out and do market studies. We've had this done, and these are people who do this for a living every day. They talk to appraisers and say, what is going to be the value? And because there isn't anything even close to this, they've got to go further out, maybe to the Frederick Market, to the New Windsor, Sykesville, to find anything close, and their numbers are much higher than a mid-two.
How many are you building down there?
I'm sorry?
How many are you building down there?
We are building 69.
69? This is 153.
But I mean, in another sense too, I mean, yes, you, you know, you're getting people in from out of counties, but what is keeping them here? There's nothing here to keep them. They're traveling to Hanover, to Westminster, to Frederick, to spend their money elsewhere. The only thing they're doing is driving here and living here and going out. I mean, they're not keeping their money here. When I, I mean, there's nothing, other than the grocery store here, and that's just for dire things. I don't shop in town.
We're certainly hoping when there's enough of homes, nice homes built, that the people, the stores and the restaurants and stuff will come.
Right, but on the...
And it won't come if we don't build nice places. It will never come. So we need to do this so they will come, and they will come when the population comes with it. Your argument's over there. Okay, let's continue on with the presentation, please.
So are there any additional questions we have on the townhomes or the single-family homes that we're proposing?
Anybody have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
What's the reason for the change in the roof pitch?
So...
Because now it looks like it takes up a ton of...
I know, I know you're going to laugh, but Jim's already disagreed with me. We thought the 912 was a lot more attractive. Spend the 512.
612.
The 612, okay? So it's potato rata. I'll just tell you flat out, okay, that that is a much more expensive roof to put on there, okay? So you want us to take the pitch of the roof down because you think it looks better? First of all, no offense, Jim, we're not going to be right in practice, but it saves him money. So we don't have any problem taking it down if you want us to.
Definitely not.
We thought we were getting a better...
Definitely not, definitely not. What you got is good.
We actually drawn with the same pitch.
Right?
We tried to, Stephen and Ed, we said no. So we originally had the plan for a lower pitch, and it saves us a considerable amount of money to do a lower pitch.
Right. I'm just curious if there was an actual reason other than aesthetic for the change in pitch.
It was dealing with previously approved architecture and trying to make it better.
Okay, I'm with you.
Don't change it. So the consensus is we're pleased with what we're seeing?
I'm agreeing with what we're seeing.
In both, excuse me, in both scenarios, the townhouses and the premiums?
You want a motion?
Well, I'm leading to that, but I wanted to get, make sure we're on the same page for both areas, you know, the townhouses and the premium homes.
I'm with it.
But if you want to make a motion now, go ahead.
I'll make a motion and we go with these new plans.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Jim, second. Bradley, did I cut you short? Do you have a comment?
I just want to confirm a couple things. The stone features are there to stay, right? Um, the other question, driveway material. I see, um, it's gonna be concrete? Okay. I didn't know if you were doing asphalt driveways or...
It's, it's, you know, we use concrete, and that is a very interesting, um, point. Personally, I'm a big believer in it. It's about two and a half tons, it's expensive.
Right.
But it looks so much better, and it doesn't disintegrate.
And that's why I asked, 'cause in here, it looks that way. I wanna make sure that we weren't agreeing to this, and it'd be asphalt, and it would change the whole...
Why do you keep asking cracking?
You don't.
I had a, I had a concrete, and I had to, I had to replace it with blacktop.
Well, I can guarantee you the concrete's gonna crack, but I can also guarantee it won't disintegrate, because asphalt's gonna disintegrate. And it's gonna crack, we know it, but it ultimately looks, it looks a lot lighter than, than...
And you can't even cover a cracked, uh, concrete driveway with blacktop, because a crack comes right through. You have to replace a whole thing.
So the color choices are what we see here? I assume that there will be multiple color choices for each model? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, this, this is a sampling of, of the colors of how they... We're really, we're trying to show you the tones that we're using in here as much as that matters.
Right. So, the rules with the townhomes, for example, I believe with the last ones, you couldn't have two of the same model next to each other, is that, it still applies? Okay.
You only gonna sell, you only gonna build as you sell?
We will build as we sell, correct?
I mean, you're not gonna put up a bunch of houses that's not sold.
Well, depends on your definition is of a bunch. If we start at 50% sold, so if it's six homes that are gonna, what we call a stick, and if we resold, we would start six.
Right, right.
What's the height?
I don't know the height. I don't have, I don't have, I don't think I have the height off the top of my head on what these are.
So we're three stories, so, three stories and the attic, so 15...
34 feet.
34 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. That falls under 35, then.
37?
Let's say it's 34. Let's say it's 34.
Let's try that. That's, that's in specs.
Okay. Any comments? Any comments on the floor? Okay, motion has been made, the second, to accept these elevations as presented tonight. All those in favor of that, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I dated, I dated these. So, I'm, as of, as Jim said, I'm gonna destroy these olds.
I check out Mountain Brook every day, check it out, make sure I don't wreck it.
All right, Jim, ordinance and agreements, none. Uh, your report, which I've covered it, but you have anything to add? Go ahead.
Just that, we, we already touched on the first couple paragraphs. I kept it short this month to help get my report out to you guys, and the packet's out a little more timely than last month. Just a tidbit on Meads, Ryan Holmes has, their permit service has submitted some applications for zoning certificates. We're sitting on them right now until there's a, a stone base course. Uh, they can't get the, they can't get a building permit until there's at least stone down on the roads, so, but they are certainly eager to move forward, so, uh, that was some good news. We've, they've actually submitted for four, uh, four model homes. The, uh, application for the railroad crossing on Meads Avenue has been submitted. We ended up submitting that as the city, since ultimately it will end up being a public street. So the railroad wanted the city to be the applicant, and we're, we'll be working through that process. So, that is really about it. Uh, we've had one, one new home in Meadowbrook issued, and then, of course, the four pending for Meads Crossing this month. So things are chugging away.
Okay. Might we move on with the...
Uh, I guess the big news is Creekside. I'm sure everyone has seen that sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Yep.
Has, has finally been poured.
That was a hard one.
So, um, they, the developers requested that we schedule another walkthrough for the project so that they can finish the closeout now that the sidewalk is, is done. So, uh, very glad to see that finally happened.
You're not doing a sidewalk in the back?
It's already there. That's been there for a little while now.
And I miss that.
Yeah, it, it stops right before, um, it stops at, it runs on the city's property where Break Iron Street is. So that stretch between the houses that front Baltimore Street and the water tank, the water tower, was actually a city parcel, and, uh, that's where Break Iron Street runs, and that little area, um, on the Baltimore Street side where the sidewalk is, is also a city parcel. So the sidewalk runs down to the end of that parcel, and then ramps down to the road to be able to cross into the shopping center. Not ideal, um, but there really wasn't a reasonable way to build it on the other side of Break Iron because of the slope. We had talked about that probably a couple years ago. So at any rate, that sidewalks in, um, the retaining wall on that one's not as nice-looking, it's just concrete, um, but it did require some retainage at the very end closest to CVS. But, uh, yeah, drive, drive through, take a look, it, it's, it's up there. So, um, so we'll be doing the walkthrough, I'm guessing probably in August, uh, for that, and getting the closeout process going there. That's really about, about it as far as, uh, active projects, so.
Okay. So I guess we're ready for, Jay?
I don't have anything that's pending that would be in your area of interest. I have other things going on with council, and the best is that we're on summer recess since June, so...
I don't have a small...
Other business? Jim, you, you wanna say anything about the Planning Commission training, training down in Gaithersburg?
Um, Gaithersburg?
In that case?
I'm not sure it was Gaithersburg. I thought it was at the, um, the...
Oh, they...
Association of Counties Summer Conference. I know they're offering it, um, through, through the MAKO convention. I think that's down at, at...
Ocean City. I was talking about the other one, the one that, somebody sent me an email.